Good evening and welcome. It's my pleasure to call the meeting to order. I want to thank all of you for braving the unusual conditions. I also want to issue a special welcome to the Citizens Academy class of 2025. Thank you for coming out. I am the substitute for Mayor White. I'll be standing in tonight. She sends warm wishes and is very optimistic that she'll be back in service shortly. And thanks you for your kind thoughts and prayers for her. So with that having been said, I'm going to ask Councilman Morton to do the invocation.
Sure.
Thank you. Could we go to Lord in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, help open our eyes and recognize that blessings come in small packages as well as the large ones. Lord, I ask that you continue to watch over this community that we call the town of Oak Island. Guide our citizens, guide our elected officials. Help us in every way, be helpful in the community. Love one another, move forward with progress and with wise choices. Lord, I also pray that you watch over our county officials and our state officials as we move into difficult budget discussions coming up. Please give us wisdom and advise us on being good stewards of fiscal policy for all of those who contribute. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Morton. And I have a brief announcement before we go to the first scheduled public hearing. There is on the agenda, award ceremony recognition for Detective O'Brien, and that has unfortunately been canceled for this evening, but we hope to reschedule it shortly. So with that being said, public hearing number one. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive citizens' comments on a proposed zoning map amendment for a portion of tax ID parcel 20300013 and 2030001303 from commercial low-density CLD to higher-density residential, R6RMF. I would like to just share with the public, we do receive a briefing from our planning director, and in our UDO code 4.6, 4.6, it has the following charge to counsel. In deciding whether to adopt a proposed amendment in this ordinance, the central issue, the central issue before town council is whether the proposed amendment advances the public health, safety, or welfare. All other issues are irrelevant, and all information related to other issues, the public hearing may be declared irrelevant by the mayor and excluded. So that is our focus. And having said that, I'm pleased to call Mr. Kirkland.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. I've got a few slides here for you. Great. Good evening. As you just mentioned, tonight is a public hearing for a proposed zoning map amendment. Parcel's 20300013 and 2030001303. The proposed map amendment would change a portion of the property from commercial low-density to higher-density residential, which is the R6MF zoning district. We'll take a look at a vicinity map on the next slide, but the property is adjacent to the Midway Commons commercial area. Also, it's in vicinity of the Dray Pack and the Pine Forest Plan Unit Developments as well. So here's an aerial photograph of the site. The two parcels outlined in red, the applicant has requested approximately 51 acres of those two parcels to be rezoned into R6MF. You can see the Midway Commons directly adjacent. If you're looking at the screen, it's on the right, near the intersection of 211 and So the proposed rezoning would, as I mentioned, cover 51.66 acres. The property is located at 3190 Southport Supply Road. Including your packet on the screen are a brief summary from the Unified Development Ordinance of the commercial low-density zoning district and the R6MF. Just briefly summarizing, CLD districts are intended to be located in outlying areas adjacent to major thoroughfares with yards and other provisions to reduce conflict with adjacent residential uses, substantial setbacks, and serve requirements for residential neighborhoods for commercial facilities and the requirements of highway-oriented tourist business. Whereas the R6MF is intended to establish areas for the preservation and development of residential neighborhoods for higher-density residential development with a range of housing types. Principal uses include larger-sized single-family residences, multifamily residences, and other compatible uses. This is also from your agenda packet. This is a zoning map. As you can see, the zoning throughout the area is consistent with the CLD, the pink. The light gray areas are not within the town boundaries. This actually borders unincorporated Brunswick County along a lot of its border there. Just a brief review of some of the permitted uses. This is certainly not an all-inclusive list. Our table of uses is quite voluminous, but in the CLD, you see mostly commercial, office, and institutional uses as permitted within the district. Interestingly, mixed-use development is a special use with supplemental regulations in that district. Within the R6MF, the uses are mostly residential, single-family duplexes, triplexes, and townhouses and multifamily are a special use. Most of the commercial, office, and institutional uses are severely limited, things like bed and breakfasts, childcare centers, public recreation, and accessory uses. I will circle back a little bit to what Mayor Protem Bach mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, and also note that in addition to 4.6, section 4.6, .4.6, the subcategory of that has counsel, says the town council shall not consider any representatives made by the petitioner that if the change is granted, the rezoned property will be used for only one of the possible range of uses permitted in the requested classification. Rather, town council shall consider whether the entire range of permitted uses in the requested classification is more appropriate than the range of uses in the existing classification. And then look at our town attorney for clarification on whether she has an opinion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think folks on the council are aware of this. I know some folks received some notices about this. Originally, this was scheduled to be a rezoning and a special use permit. The special use permit was withdrawn, and so tonight it's just the rezoning, which is a legislative decision by this body.
Thank you. So anytime a zoning map, especially a zoning map amendment or a text amendment comes in, we should look to our adopted plans, specifically the comprehensive land use plan. In our comprehensive land use plan is a future land use map. That map lists these parcels as being suitable for commercial mixed use. Now, the comp plan also considers the future land use map as the main guide for deciding on zoning map amendments, but it is not regulatory. It is advisory in nature. But that being said, the commercial mixed-use category is intended to set up a concentration of commercial service and residential uses to serve the community and the region, encourage a mix of high-intensity pedestrian-oriented uses compatibly designed and arranged around a compact core. Non-residential uses, land uses should occupy at least 60% of the developed area. And then office and institutional usage is recommended as a buffer slash transition between lower and higher-density land uses. And just as a note, the commercial mixed-use category, as of the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, comprised approximately 265 acres of vacant land within that future land use Here we see a snippet of the data from our future land use map. The parcel, the two parcels under consideration are smack dab in the middle in that dark purple. As you can see, the Midway Commons closer to the intersection of Southport Supply Road and Midway is also commercial mixed use on that map. And then you see a smattering of other land uses throughout the area, thoroughfare, commercial, residential mixed use, and open space and conservation uses. So all that being said, staff recommends that the, and should mention, that the planning board reviewed this at their last meeting and recommended denial of the proposed map amendment. In addition, staff recommends that council deny the proposed zoning map amendment based on inconsistency with the future land use map designation of commercial mixed use. That concludes my presentation for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Questions from the council?
I have a question. Mr. Kirkland, on the rezoning application, the third page of that application, there's a question for the applicant that says, is the proposed zoning consistent with the land use plan? And they checked the box, yes. That is not correct, is it? It is not.
Is that this is not consistent with the conference?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Other questions?
I could, Mr. Kirkland. Commercial zoning, residential zoning in Oak Island, what percentage is commercial? What percentage is residential?
I can tell you that the vast majority of land in Oak Island is zoned residential or encumbered as a residential development. I can give you some numbers about vacant commercial property throughout the town. As far as an exact ratio, I don't have that off the top of my head. I apologize, sir.
So if I may, Councilman Kraft. I'd like to pose that question in a slightly different fashion. So we have the members of our Citizens Academy here, and at the initial meeting, our manager talked at some length about finances and the ideal ratio between commercial and residential, which typically is posed as 80/20, and we are not close to that. And that is a long-term issue for us, a challenge.
Yes, sir.
Do you support that number, or do you have a higher number? 80/20 is what I believe is conventionally used, but perhaps 75/25, or?
No, I think the conventional wisdom from a financial sense is what we should target, yes, sir. In addition, you know, circling back a little bit to Mr. Kraft's question, of all the commercial land that is in a CLD or a CB zoning, those are our two main commercial zonings, we have approximately 450 acres that's vacant right now. About 200 of that is at this intersection, and a little bit more is located near the airport in the CLD zoning district. So 55 acres out of that 200 is a quarter of that potential commercial property.
Okay, so to transpose Mr. Kraft's question, we are not close to approaching the ideal ratio. Is that a fair statement?
I think without more commercial development, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Kirkland?
Hey, Matt, quick question, if I may. So the planning board, when they denied the recommendation 4 to 2, they also made the recommendation to the applicant to modify the plans before presenting to town council. Can you tell us if the 400-odd pages that we have in front of you, is that exactly the same as the planning board reviewed at that moment, or have things changed in here?
Yes, sir. I'm not aware of any modification unless the applicant wants to present part of a modification as part of their presentation for you tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morton?
I have no questions for staff.
I have just one more. Matt, you're a professional planner, professional planning practices. You've noted that we have 200-and-some acres at the Southport Supply Midway intersection and some other over near the airport. Do you consider it best planning practices to keep commercial along major corridors and thoroughfares such as the Southport Supply Road?
It's an interesting question. From a planning perspective, typically what you want to see along these high-traffic corridors, you might call them, or thoroughfare corridors, is exactly what the commercial mixed-use recommendation is towards. You want a compact, high-intensity development in that area because you save, if you build that area more intensely where the infrastructure can handle it, you don't have as much sprawl and push into other areas. From a typical planning perspective, yes, ma'am. I do think the commercial mixed use is what you'd want to see out of a major, you know, area node of commercial activity, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One last question. So you were asked by Councilman Chulo whether or not the submission was changed, and so all of us received War and Peace, volumes one and two here. 400 pages. Does it change your disposition on this request? Is there any nuance in here that changes your recommendation?
Our recommendation is based on consistency with the adopted land use plan. You know, if the applicant addresses that in some way, but basically our analysis of it is that it is not consistent.
Okay, so the short answer is no. It doesn't change your disposition despite the voluminous, whatever these reports are? It doesn't go directly to the question that you're recommending on?
Yes, sir.
Would that be fair?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think the, if the board would allow, I think the applicants would like to.
Yes, coming next. The applicant and any other staff that you need, sir. Name and record, please. Name and address.
Joe Barklow, Stark Enterprises, Director of Development, 629 Uglade Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Appreciate that. Mr. Kirkland ran through our application. I was told there was some visuals that I sent, just, there we go. Thank you. Do I have control of that with this?
Forward and back.
Forward and back. Again, Stark Enterprises, just for some background, is, has been a leading developer in the Cleveland area with properties across the country for over 40 years. Our portfolio totals over $2 billion. It includes commercial, residential, entertainment, and mixed-use developments, to name a few. We acquire, develop, and operate our properties. We're a long-term holder of our projects and properties. We invest in communities by becoming part of the community. An example of that is our Oak Harbor Village multifamily development, which is in Brunswick County, just down the road on 211 and Sunset Harbor. Besides multifamily, there is frontage on 211 that is to be developed as commercial, just for some background. The proposed rezoning tonight is generally consistent with the future land use map, in our opinion. As Mr. Kirkland stated, we are rezoning a portion of the parcel here at 3190 Southport Supply Road. We're still developing along 211. Commercial is to remain as CLD, and that will tie and works with the Midway Commons area to the right, which is the purple square on the right. So really, this future land use, this depicts the future land use map for the mixed use. This depicts this whole 112-acre area, and really, all these parcels function together to achieve a true mixed use. And we feel that rezoning to the R6MF limits some of the uses to uses that are more compatible with the specifics of this mixed-use district, this 112 acres, and more specifically, some of the specifics of the land here in the parcel, and I'll expand on that. So the blue area represents the area proposed to be rezoned. There is commercial frontage along 211, and that can be increased as well. So all that frontage is developed as commercial. And we feel that residential providing rooftops to support the businesses, the commercial that's already developed and then proposed to be developed, is truly mixed use and will support the commercial developments, like I said, which at this point are still working with, you know, vacant storefronts and out parcels that are still to be developed. So this, by mixing the use, providing a variety of residential that can then support the specific commercial development of this area, we think is a best use or a reasonable use that is consistent with a mixed-use type of development.
Ms. Barklow, a question, if I may.
Yes.
So the percentages you're using are slightly distorted since you are including the existing Midway Commons Shopping Center, correct?
That's correct, because this block, this 112 acres, is essentially one mixed-use area.
Okay.
What I was going to say, it's mixed use, it's commercial in front, residential in the rear, because we think there's some challenges to developing commercial to the rear of this parcel. Specifically, our parcel is narrow and deep, as you can see. So once we develop the front for commercial, a commercial development really will struggle with visibility to the frontage and exposure. Not only will the commercial development along the front of 211 kind of limit that visibility, but it's also facing the back of Midway Commons that Lowe's Development with some stormwater area in between. So it's really, a commercial development is really limited and challenged, not only from visibility, like I said, blocked by commercial in front and to the side, but it's also going to be limited by access. With the development of the improvement of 211, NC DOT has already designated that center portion of the parcel, kind of midway through in the middle there, an access break. So you're going to get a driveway there, and it's only a right-in, right-out. So a commercial development to the rear will be challenged to gain secondary access to a larger commercial development in the back. Now, we've managed to negotiate secondary access for our plan with the Midway Commons to support that because we really feel what we plan to do and a multitude, within R6MF, the allowable uses that we can develop there can support the commercial where Midway Commons sees the benefit of that cross-access. You know, another commercial development that could be viewed as a competitor, especially when Midway Commons has vacancies and yet undeveloped out parcels, that secondary access may not be possible. And again, that secondary access could be limited. So beyond the visibility and the access, there's also the specific characteristics of this parcel. I roughly outlined in yellow here the wetlands and unsuitable soils of this parcel. Commercial developments will struggle to accommodate and work around and preserve these areas. The rezoning to R6MF will allow a variety of residential uses that can accommodate and then preserve those wetlands and those areas that do have unsuitable soil. So there's a large bit of green space and open area that rezoning to R6MF will be able to preserve. So just to wrap it all up here, this, to your point, this, we are looking at this as one area. This is a very distinct 112 acres for mixed use at the northwest corner here, and that it all really has to function together. And if you are going to mix use, if you are going to mix uses, you need the rooftops to support the commercial developments that are being proposed and are already built here. So there has to be a balance. We have a lot of commercial up front that's kind of cart before the horse. We need some rooftops here to support that. Besides that, I think you all are aware and everyone here that this community is quickly growing, is the fastest-growing county in the state, and there's a shortfall of housing. And to rezone this area will allow for a variety of residential options to provide the community accessible quality housing that there's going to be a need for. There already is, and it's going to continue to grow. So this is, this plan not only supports a mixed-use intent, but also meets a need of the community for additional housing that's accessible to everyone, including the community and the workers that'll, and the people that are supporting these businesses here.
Mr. Barklow, bring me full circle, if you will, sir. Looking at your graph.
Yes, sir.
And I understand Midway Commons is commercial. Looking at your graph, it is nine, you're asking for 92% residential and 8% commercial. All I see is the lower-left corner of 4.55 acres as commercial and nothing else.
So to be fair, the 16 acres to the north, where the gun range is, that is not part of, that is to remain CLD, undeveloped. We have four acres at the front, or it's like 4.25, that'll remain CLD. And it was discussed at Planning Board, and as this graphic shows, that that whole frontage can be developed as commercial. The only reason initially that it was left off to remain as CLD was we were early in engineering phases, and if we needed stormwater in that area, we were going to have to put it there. We do not have to put it there. The plan, to not get into too many specifics, because it's not germane to this conversation, we don't need the storm there. We can develop those close to nine acres, commercial along the front. So that's why I say the developer, we can get to 40% of this overall mixed-use area. We can get to 40% of residential.
But what you're bringing tonight is way back in the very back where a gun range is, that could be, that is commercial. And at the very front, facing 211, the commercial, what I would like to think would be the commercial area, that is 4.55 acres, unless you make some adjustments.
Yes. But we have, yes. Okay.
Sorry, sir. Have you finished your presentation? I know we.
Yeah. I was going to, he was asking a question, but I was going to open the floor if you guys had any questions specific to me.
I'll open the floor to council to ask questions. Thank you. Any other questions?
Not at this point.
I have two questions for you, sir. So when you talk about housing stock, are you talking about affordable housing, low-income housing? What does that mean?
Talking about market rate for rent housing.
Market rate?
Market rate.
Okay. So that's, that clarifies that.
As an example of something else that we're doing down the road at Oak Harbor, it's a community of multifamily developments, two, four, and sixplexes, market rate anywhere from 900 to 1,400 square feet, an average rent of, average of about $2,000 a month. It's a community, it includes pool, community center, fitness center, dog park, playground, et cetera.
Okay. And we have a letter from Cape Fear Commercial, and you mentioned you've struck a relationship with, yes.
Yes.
Is this a business relationship or just simply an endorsement?
Endorsement, I was going to speak.
So you're not compensated in any way, is that correct?
That is correct. I'm in no way aligned or associated with itself or fire or cell side of this party.
You're saying you're okay with it, but you're not compensated directly in partnership with this Stark group? Thank you.
Mr. Barklow?
Yes, sir.
Believe it or not, I read all of this stuff that you all submitted, and somewhere in.
I will tell you that volume one is the most important, and volume two through 10 were offered as background to show our due diligence. That was included as an exhibit. We have studied this area. We have done soils, we have done environmental studies. We know exactly what this property is and what it will suit, along with, and then in conjunction with that, knowing, understanding, trying to understand your ordinance, what is best suited here to support not only what we want to do, but what others are already doing.
But you just said Oak Harbor is roughly 1,400-square-foot homes. Somewhere, didn't you put in here that these are single-family rental properties of? Somewhere, didn't you put in here that these are single-family rental properties of 2,000 to 2,200 square feet? Did I not read that?
Uh, 2,200 square, I mean, no, no.
Good, okay. Well, so these will be 1,400 square feet homes?
They're multi fam, they're cot, Oak Harbor is a cottage-style home and then they're single, they're for a single family. And they're two, four and sixplex, so they're attached. Yeah.
I'm Brian Millick. I'm also with Stark Enterprises, same address as, as Joe. I'm the chief operating officer with Stark Enterprises. So to quickly hit on your point, yeah, they're, they're, they range from 900 to 1,400 square feet. They all have an attached two-car garage, everything's single fan, single story. So no one lives above you, no one lives below you. Everybody has a driveway they can pull in, they can park two cars in their driveway and they can park two cars in their garage. Two points that I wanted to add to the presentation. One, the adjacent surrounding zoning for the parcels that aren't a part, a part of Oak Island, the town, they are also, there's residential and CLD. The CLD zoning in Brunswick County permits multifamily development. So this is consistent, that, that's the same zoning we're doing down the street with Oak Harbor in Brunswick County. So that's, that's, that's just a point I wanted to add to, you know, our presentation.
Other questions from council?
Same question, if I may, that I asked, I posed, Mr. Kirkland, since the Planning Board denied this 4 to 2, has anything changed in this application since Planning Board denied it?
Yes. I appreciate you asking that question. Nothing has changed. As you all know, and as was presented originally, this was, there was to be a special use permit hearing today. We pulled that special use permit because our objective was to be able to meet with the members of the town to discuss and understand. Planning, some of the recommendations we heard from planning were to change potentially, they, they weren't as worried about the percentage of commercial versus residential. They were proposing that that 16.75 acres in the back should be proposed residential. So our goal was to meet, rather than amend a presentation based on some recommendations and some varying recommendations, was to meet and understand what you all wanted to see, to help deliver something that's going to be consistent with what the town would be looking to develop here. So we didn't change the application. We were trying to meet with you all and, and review and understand and take your feedback. And, and that we would be modifying whatever, making the modifications of the presentation. There wasn't any direct specific suggestions on what that would be. That was one thing they said even in wrapping up the meeting is, you know, things for you to consider. But we wanted to, to speak with you all to, to, to understand what that would be.
So leaving aside, and by the way, there's a lot of quality work here, just, it's, it's a lot. That said, the crux of this argument, I mean, the real premise here is you're making a judgment about not only what would be profitable for you, but in order to justify that, you're arguing this would be the best case for Oak Island. Whereas our land use plan, current and one in development, is likely to land on the other side of that argument, quite frankly, because the real issue here is tax-based, long-term sustainability. And in the past, when we have surrendered commercial space, we've paid a price in terms of taxes on residents. So I understand we're all projecting about what the future need is. You are, and that's your argument, but it also is our concern and our argument as elected officials. We own that. Like where, do we want to go as a community? What does our strategic plan say? What is likely to come out of the land use plan? What do the citizens want is kind of the issue here. So just to clarify, the other stuff in here is interesting, but that's the bottom line.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of points to that, if I may, to respond to that.
Sure. We're having an argument. Go right ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So, so with, I think Joe pointed out a couple of the characteristics of the land, which make it challenging to be a truly commercial, strictly commercial development. And when you say commercial, that means a lot of different things, right? Under the existing CLD zoning, there's a lot of permitted uses, right? I think Mr. Kirkland mentioned, you know, office and residential. It also is outdoor storage, it's manufactured housing. There's a lot of other uses within the existing approved CLD zoning that fit that, which also somewhat fit the characteristics of the land, right? That's important and I think a part of our, our argument of what we're trying to put here is there's two really important things there. Access, right? Number one is access. You have one access point. We, and, and as a part of our history, I think Joe pointed out, we have a very large mixed-use portfolio. Our portfolio's more commercial. We have everybody in our portfolio from Tiffany to Walmart, Apple to, to Target, right? So all those tenants are members, are, we have relationships with all of them. We have a pretty good understanding of how they approach real estate, what they're looking for in land. We developed those sites for them. The, the access here is going to be challenging for anybody, right? They're going to, they're going to look, they need two sites, they need two points of access. It's required, you know, usually for fire purposes and everything else, loading trucks, everything else. Right now, with what you have there with the Midway Shopping Center, it's, it's not fully occupied as it sits now. And you have a, a significant amount of undeveloped out parcels that sit there right now as well, which point to a demand issue for multi, or for commercial, commercial in the sense of retail, which I think is the commercial you're talking about. So it creates some issues relative to that and some concerns about what that demand would be. And then also with being wetlands back there, being tough soil conditions, in order to make your stormwater work and everything else for that site, you're going to have to impact those wetlands, which is going to be very costly and challenging and an already challenged site because of access. And then also, when you think about this as being a commercial site, and if you're thinking of putting a Target there or another retailer and being a mixed-use zone, Midway Shopping Center turns its back on that property already. So any, any shopping, any tenant that's going to go there in that shopping center, their front door is the back door of a shopping center for Lowe's, for where groceries are getting delivered every day. So I don't know that that future land use, in the sense of being commercial, that would be retail, considered that when Midway Crossing was developed in the manner that it was. So those are the reasons why we're saying it generally fits with what the use is there. The mixed-use component includes residential. It includes, so we're proposing to keep commercial where you have it on the frontage. And if this parcel isn't developed as, you know, retail, what else is it going to be developed as under the existing CLD zoning? I think is the question.
Correct. And I, to be fair, I heard your, loud and clear, your argument about the restrictions the physical space would impose. That being said, what's best for the town, where we ought to go, is the difference between us in this hypothetical discussion we're having. And what I know is that when I look at the studies and what happens when you build predominantly residential is you, you get an initial revenue stream, but eventually you go net negative because you have to provide services, right? Whereas commercial is long-term, more stable revenue source. So that's kind of what, I won't speak for others, it's kind of what I'm thinking about, right? Because it's, it's not next year or the year after, it's 10 years down the road, what leads to sustainability, right? And do we really need more houses or do we need a broader tax base? To put it in its simplest terms. And, and thank you for.
Yeah.
The dialogue. I understand your argument.
The dialogue is important.
And I don't doubt that what you do is, you do well. The question is, does it fit here, right? It's not what, what you did in Ohio or Illinois, it's what you do here.
And the mixed-use development, you know, does include other uses that aren't just commercial. And, you know, we've developed commercial with, you know, retail above, residential above retail. And in order to develop, you know, we're not actively developing that because in order to develop it, it requires tax abatement, right? We require, 100% tax abatement. So those tax base, you know, it requires different parking conditions. There's a lot of nuance that goes into it. We're pretty well versed in it and it, there's a lot of challenges that it presents. So the tax base and the, you know, that, the overall economic impact, there's a lot of nuance to it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council, Brady Richardson, I'm, I'm assisting with the rezoning request. And after I get done, I would like for you to listen from, and hear a few minutes from Bryce Morrison, senior vice president at Cape Fear Commercial. He is one of the leading agents in the greater New Hanover Brunswick County area for a very large commercial realty enterprise. And I think he can put practical, reality-owned commercial in what you have here with your comprehensive land use plan. As you look at the property on the screen, it's a, you're, it's not like you've got 51 acres in a vacuum like you have on the opposite side of 211 that's all CLD right now. You have a synergy with this parcel, with the front being commercial along 211. And what the, the rezoning would enable them to do is to create this onsite synergy and dynamic where you're not having to have cars leave and get on 211 to go shopping, especially at Midway Commons. And that's what Mr. Morrison will speak to. You've got to have rooftops to be able to support the vital commercial. And so when you're looking at it from the standpoint of what's promoting the health, safety and welfare of your community, you look at the fact that this is a small percentage of the available vacant acreage. I believe Matt spoke and said that right now there is 450 acres of vacant commercial space in Oak Island. And I would submit to you that absent a rezoning on unique circumstances like this, that track's going to sit empty. And even if the frontage on 211 gets built commercial, you're not going to have anything behind it get developed commercial because there's no road frontage. The access in and out of that parcel is extremely limited, not to mention the environmental impacts. And then, as Brian was just touching upon, Mr. Millick, you're going to be having commercial businesses backing up to the back of an existing commercial business. And that's what makes Midway Commons being here and supporting this so, so important is they're providing off-access to 11, a synergy between the two parcels where you've got multifamily of a variety of housing options that you do not presently have, able to bike, walk to and from Midway Commons and to help support the, the success of that development. I'm not going to say it's struggling, I'll let Mr. Morrison speak to that, but I am telling you that they have vacant units in there now that have been developed and they still have available out parcels that have yet to be developed. And that's because you don't have rooftops to support the commercial. Going in real quick on the modification of the plans, this is a straight rezoning. At the time it came in for special use, that's what probably the vast majority of the voluminous materials you have was really addressing. There's really no plans to be submitted with a rezoning like there would be for a special use permit. And so there was nothing to really modify because we're coming in for a straight rezoning. We tried to look at the option of doing a conditional zoning. That is not presently available in your ordinance because of the current zoning and the limitation on, I'm trying to remember the usage by Brady, something to the effect of a 25% threshold that would, that would be, that would prohibit coming in for a conditional zoning. Because my folks would love to get up here and have discussion with council about conditions and things that you as a council would like to see to further enhance this, but that's not a tool that's in our toolbox that's available to us under the current zoning. The last thing I'll say is just touching on, I've gone through your comprehensive land use plan and looked at it. I disagree with staff that this would not promote pedestrian and bicycle-friendly attributes because of wood, because of the onsite synergy and mitigating and reducing the traffic that would have to get out on 211 just to go to Midway Commons right around the corner for groceries or what have you. In your goals, you talk about protecting tree canopy. That's what this rezoning would enable us to do, as well as the other environmental impacts that are highlighted in the yellow screen. You're to, one of your other goals, goal number five, consider the fiscal impact on the town and its citizens. Right now, but for a rezoning, this land is going to sit vacant. And based upon what you'll hear from Mr. Morrison, it's going to sit vacant for quite a while before anything's ever going to be developed on it. And I submit, I submit to you that after the frontage of this parcel is developed in commercial, you're going to have other people coming in there for a rezoning to do exactly what we're trying to do here because of the unique aspects of this parcel with its limited road frontage and all of it being towards the back. You ask for your strategies, I'm sorry, number 10 goal is expand the economic development. That's what this will do. By adding rooftops, it will enable you to build out with Mr. Morrison's development, the Midway Commons. And I would submit to you that across 211 with all that CLD, now it's got rooftops and you're going to see people wanting to build commercial in a CLD district across from 211 because now they're going to have rooftops to support the growth of that business. So you're diversifying and you're stabilizing the economy there. Your vision statement says that you want efficient sidewalks, bikeways and roadway systems to provide for an accessible community. That's what this would provide by rezoning. Presently, you have 86.48% single-family in the town versus less than 8% multifamily. The rezoning would enable my clients to come forward to try and get your multifamily ratio enhanced on a smaller piece of parcel, attractive land, to again, support your local businesses that are right now in the Midway Commons and to grow those local businesses that are willing to take a risk now that there's more people to support it. You say on page, in section 2-12, housing affordability is an increasing concern nationwide as well as in the town. This rezoning would enable you to address that, albeit on a small basis, but nevertheless, you're making inroads there. Balancing the interests, this is 217, balancing the interest of retired population, summer visitors and the labor force. A rezoning will enable you to accomplish that under your land use plan. Section 3-26, table 310, there's very little multifamily residential development within the town when compared with the large amount of single-family residential development. I can, I'll try to just be brief and sit down on this, but on section 3-34 of your land use plan, community input, your community said that it wanted connectivity between residential housing units and commercial areas. And that's exactly what this will do if you allow the rezoning, is you will have that connectivity and you will actually mitigate the amount of traffic going on 211 with folks being able to go to and from Midway Commons for not only the businesses that are there now, but the ones that are going to grow because you're getting rooftops in under the And then the last thing, and I'll sit down and yield to Mr. Morrison to talk about this commercial aspect. You look at the return on investment in your land use plan, sections 4-18 to 4-19, one way to increase municipal revenues is through multifamily residential, which has your second highest appraised value of land uses. We're here today, my folks would love to be able to show you a beautiful site plan. I think that's why they've given you other projects they've done, but for purposes of rezoning, that's not really something that's competent at least, but at least you know that the purpose of this rezoning is not just a straight rezoning in a vacuum. It's connected to a synergy that already exists, but is struggling to grow because you don't have the rooftops. And I'm happy to answer any questions before I sit down unless you want to hear from Mr. Morrison.
Questions from council?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Richardson or the applicant, can you tell me, did I read in here correctly that this property was timbered in 2019?
I have no idea of that. I don't know if you guys do.
Okay. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the EDR photos from 2016 and 2020 and.
Maybe I'll answer your question, just.
I can, I can probably simplify this. You stated that allowing these folks to develop this as residential property would preserve our tree canopy. My question is, how many trees exist on the property now? Based on the 2020 map I'm looking at, there are hardly any trees. And so how is that going to preserve our tree canopy?
All I can tell you is, my understanding is, there are a ton of trees on this property. I'm not sure what picture you're referring to. The actual owners that are under contract with my folks are here, they refer to it as a tree farm.
It was in, it was in part of your submitted package.
Page 152.
As the applicant, I will say that we're well aware of the tree preservation intent code. And actually, I believe it's this week they're completing a tree survey on the site to comply with that. So it's our full intention to, I know that's not exactly what your question is. I just wanted to make the point.
So here's my point, okay? If you develop this property, then you're going to have to comply with our Chapter 32 Vegetation Ordinance. What I have trouble with is someone standing before us and saying, "This is going to protect your tree canopy," when in fact, Mr. Richardson, you can't even answer my question.
Well, actually, I can because right now is commercial low density. Commercial is going to take out more trees and vegetation than what they're proposing to do of a multifamily around the environmental areas that cannot be built upon, given what they would be able to do, where they're going up vertically rather than sprawling out with the commercial, which again goes to, if you're trying to promote commercial on this track, you're going to have issues with being able to build anything there because of, in a commercial sense, because of the presence of the wetlands and the poor soils, which are shown on this overhead on the screen.
My point is, is I'm not sure in actuality the trees are actually there to preserve. And that's, we don't need to talk about it anymore.
Looking at the picture on the screen, I see a heavy amount of trees on it. I can try and look at the picture you've got. I'm sorry, it's a lot of materials.
I think we will, we'll leave the conversation where it is, Counselor, if that's all right. Mr. Morrison, we have your statements. Is there anything else you want to add? I would ask you to be brief because we do have a...
I will.
Want to hear the public on this.
So Bryce Morrison, Cape Fear Commercial out of Wilmington. We represent Lowe's Foods Corporate MDI Management as a client of ours. We assist them with projects all throughout southeast North Carolina, including this one. Wanted to come up real quick and just, just clear up my relationship here. I do, I represent Lowe's Foods with Midway Commons. We do all the leasing and sales at Southport Crossings as well. The whole reason that, and so I don't have any relationship or any, I don't represent in any capacity the owners of this residential component, the sellers, the buyers, anything. The only way I got involved is they reached out to me as the representative of Lowe's Foods to discuss the opportunity of possible cross-access into the center for their residents to cross over. That's when I got involved and made the approach Lowe's Foods about their interest in it. And of course, the only reason they have interest in cooperating with that, which the cross-access easement agreement and maintenance agreement has, that language has already been drafted and agreed upon, is ready to be circulated for execution. The only reason they wanted to do that is because they did want to encourage the residential traffic to come and participate, shop, and cross over and through the shopping center with the intent that it would bolster the business for the tenants that are already in place there. Also, as everybody's, we've mentioned, there, it's been somewhat stagnant there from a leasing-sales perspective, particularly on the out parcels. And to your point about generating the revenue long-term, yeah, agree, commercial does do that. But to get to that point, we need, what our other tenants, buyers, regional, national, retailers are looking for is traffic counts and rooftops. If they can't check those two boxes, they move on. And so we're, and we've hit that kind of roadblock where we're talking to a lot of these people, a lot of the people in the community that I'd be surprised how many calls I get from people in the community asking me, "Who are we talking to now?" Because they want to see some of these services, amenities come to the center. So we're trying to do that. And this would enable, would certainly help our case to attract more of these retail users and as well as obviously support the businesses that are already in place. And so that's why I'm here, just to let you know that, hey, Lowe's Foods MDI Management is in full support of this project for that purpose.
And thank you, sir. You clarified your answer. Your first answer was perfectly acceptable to me, but since this arrived this evening, due diligence required me to ask whether you were a partner.
No, no, I'm glad you did because I wanted it clear too, because I don't want it anyway. Again, I represent Lowe's Foods. That's the only interest I have. That's the only, so that's my fiduciary responsibility.
Love Lowe's, I get it.
Yes, sir.
Was there any other?
And without a doubt, Midway Commons benefits if it's more residential than commercial.
Yes, sir.
Behind your back door.
That's right. And that's why the interest was there, to create, to agree to the connectivity.
Yeah, you have a declared self-interest. We understand that.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Should this council not agree to changing the zoning, would you still honor, consider honoring that cross-access engagement agreement? Should it be developed more of commercial properties than residential?
That's a good point. It would, no. I mean, just frankly, we, the reason we agreed to it was to encourage the residential growth. It would be, it would not be our advantage, it would be a disadvantage to us to align with another competitive commercial project over there. So I would be surprised. I can't speak for them on that. That's my opinion. But I suspect that would be Lowe's Foods' position.
Okay. Honest, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Morrison? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please.
Glenn Baker.
No clock? All right, great. Hey, I'm Glenn Baker. I live on 110 Northeast 16th Street. Good evening, pro temp mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about an issue of great importance to our community, the proposed rezoning of the property near Lowe's at Midway and Highway 211. I stand before you to express my strong opposition to this change and urge you to preserve the parcel's original commercial designation. The land was designated for commercial use with careful planning and foresight. That decision was made to strengthen our town's economic stability, ensuring that Oak Island continues growing in a way that benefits residents and businesses. Rezoning it for residential use, particularly rental apartments, would be a short-sighted decision with long-term consequences that we simply cannot afford. Commercial development at this location makes sense. It sits at a major intersection along Key Highway, a prime spot to attract businesses that will contribute to our tax base, create jobs, and provide essential goods and services. This kind of growth allows our residents to shop and work locally, reducing the need to travel to Wilmington for everyday necessities. A thriving commercial district means a stronger, more self-sufficient Oak Island. On the other hand, converting this land to residential use would put a strain on our community. Rental apartments require increased town services, more infrastructure maintenance, expanded emergency response, and additional school capacity, all of which come at a cost to taxpayers. Instead of generating revenue, this rezoning would place a financial burden on our town and its residents. Beyond the economic impact, this location is simply unsuitable for dense housing. A high-traffic highway intersection is no place for families to live safely or comfortably. Well-planned communities separate commercial and residential zones for a reason. Business districts belong along major roads while homes should be placed in a quieter, more livable areas. We need only look at Route 17 in Leland to see how thoughtful zoning supports smart, balanced growth. Allowing developers to dictate zoning based on profit-driven motives rather than community needs sets a dangerous precedence. If we give in to this change, what's next? Where do we draw the line? Our zoning laws exist to ensure sustainable development, and we must uphold them to protect the future of Oak Island. I urge you to reject this rezoning proposal, keep this land commercial as it was originally intended. Doing so will protect our town's economic future, prevent unnecessary financial strain, and uphold the quality of life that makes Oak Island such a great place to live. And I will add, the planning board voted four to two against this proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I neglected to mention, I think Mr. Baker's well aware, three minutes is the speaker's limitation, and we do encourage all of you to be as civil as possible. Thank you.
Tracy Swanson.
Hi, my name's Tracy Swanson. I'm a business owner in Midway Commons, Swanson Realty. I also, we're building a house on Yacht Drive. We've lived in the county since 2005, so we've watched a lot of it grow. I read the comprehensive land plan too, not probably as much as everybody else. But one of the things that Oak Island residents want is not another Long Beach Road. That specifically is stated in there. And unless we can support the commercial that we have now, then we're going to have another Long Beach Road down 211 heading into Oak Island. Our beach is where our tourists go. I don't want to see a manufactured community there, and that's allowed in commercial low density. Stark has come by and they've said, "We're trying to work with you and do what you want as well as what benefits them." I can tell you, as a business owner in Midway Commons, we have zero traffic. They go to the grocery store and that's it. That building has been there for over 10 years, and we have yet to have it full. Did you read the sign on Pet Supplies Plus? They stopped paying their rent because they don't get enough business. So I understand that everybody wants business. I want business. It makes my business grow. I live here too. I want a Panera and all the other stuff there. But until we can get something that works together where we're like, hey, we can have commercial and we can have residential. This isn't about, you know, I don't want another storage shed building or Dollar General, no offense to them, because they're great stores. But it's like, you're saying commercial when you think, oh, yeah, we're going to get all these little fancy things, but we're not. We're going to get a big old piece of concrete out there with another storage building, and then 10 years it's going to be torn down and we're going to be looking like Long Beach Road again. Oak Island residents do not want that. It specifically says that in there. These guys are saying, hey, we want to put some sidewalks in. We want to help what we want in the community. As a resident, I want a community that I can get on my bike and I can ride from my house to Midway Commons and go shopping and ride my back home. I can't do that. So I just ask y'all to please, you know, look at each case for what we're wanting rezoned. They're not coming in and putting these high-rise apartments in there. They're putting horizontal houses that people can afford, where we can get some people in there that can work in our restaurants, that can support what you want. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, this is your statement, of course, that was distributed tonight, correct?
Yes.
Yes, just to note that. Thank you.
Derek Williams.
Good evening. My name is Derek Williams. I live at 125 Southwest 5th Street, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. In January of 2017, the town of Oak Island adopted the current comprehensive land use plan. As you know, the role of the comprehensive plan is to guide future growth and development for communities. It should be noted that in rapidly growing, changing communities, and we are certainly that, it is very important to develop plans that will help you prepare for that growth and change. Once these plans have been completed, they should be followed. In 2017, that plan made several observations, recommendations that are relevant tonight. There was and is significant growth occurring in Oak Island. On Table 2-2 of the plan, it identified 188% growth since 1988. That was a long time ago. But that's what you're doing, is you're looking forward, you're doing plans for the future. Based on the future land use plan developed as part of the planning study, and I think this is important, there will be significant residential growth on the mainland, close to this area, in the area adjacent to 211 and Middleton Boulevard. In the future, that part of this town is going to change drastically, and those house rooftops are going to happen unless something really, really strange happens that would throw us off course. And I don't think anybody really expects that. Goal 11 of the comprehensive land use plan calls for the town to strive to expand economic development within its jurisdiction. The 2017, 2017 plan recognized the town's residential growth was going to continue and that there would be a need for commercial development to service those new residents and to provide financial diversity within the town. One of the strategies listed in the town includes diversifying and stabilizing the economy. We've already talked, we're mainly residential, we need diversity in our town. Once again, the town's long range plan is recognizing the importance of some non-residential residential development in the town. And finally, but certainly not least, the comprehensive plan includes a future land use plan, and that plan shows very clearly that this parcel should be designated as commercial development. The town invested a lot of time, energy, and money in that 2017 plan. We're working on a new plan. I ask you to follow the plan that was put in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Robert Green.
Robert Green, 130 Southeast 40th Street on the island of Oak. I'm here to talk to you about the development. It's going to happen, no matter what. It's, my time's up. I caution you, I come from Long Island, and Long Island was a nice place like Oak Island. Then more and more people came, more and more developments, and then everything got overtaxed. I was a kid, I went to Jones Beach. Jones Beach then was full of, you'd have to step over people to get to the water. We are potentially setting ourselves up for that situation. We're overcrowded as it is. There isn't a sufficient amount of parking spaces. And the houses that they're talking about, and I wish them all due respect, are kind of small. You're asking for a transient population. I live in a 2,200 square foot house. It's not a big house. Just my wife and myself. You're talking 1,500, you're not talking about a family. I don't see, with all due respect. And the final piece I'd like to just add to you, and whatever you decide is the right decision, I wish you Godspeed. They need to have mass transit. You have to start thinking about having buses because you can't accommodate all the traffic that's going to start coming through Oak Island as it is now, never mind how many thousands of people. Godspeed. You can't stop it. All you can try to do is plan for the future. I thank you. And I'm parting because I'm here for another comment. I'm going to say the word boo. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had, sign up for the public hearing.
Thank you. Council comments, discussion?
I just wanted to add an important, what I believe to be an important note, and I think keeps getting somewhat overlooked. The existing zoning CLD, within the existing zoning CLD, single-family homes is a permitted use. So whether this part, this entire parcel can be developed as single-family homes without a special use permit. So the commercial zoning that's there and a part of the future use, we're proposing something that is a mixed use, that is retail and commercial, is commercial and residential. You can do single-family homes under the existing zoning. So I just, I think that's an important point that I wanted to point out.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for the addendum. Anything from council, discussion, comments?
I want to close the public hearing.
Well, actually, the procedure is discussion and then a motion to close. So if there's no discussion, do I have a...
I have discussion and a couple of questions.
Please.
The gentleman, if I may, sir. I'm sorry, I did not write down your name. I apologize.
Mr. Brian Midlock.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. I'm wrestling with three or four points. At the very beginning, we were told by Matt, "If it advances the public health, safety, or welfare." And then 4.6, 4.6 says, "Shall consider the impact of the proposed change on the public at large."
The gentleman, if I may, sir. I'm sorry, I did not write down your name. I apologize.
Mr. Brian Milke.
Brian?
Yes.
I'm wrestling with three or four points. At the very beginning, we were told by Matt, "If it advances the public health, safety, or welfare." And then 4.6, .4.6 says, "Shall consider the impact of the proposed change on the public at large." So I'm wrestling with that for this reason. We keep telling ourselves that we're 90 or 95% build-out on the island. So our sources of revenue are going to come from property tax or sales tax. If we don't have any more commercial land, then it's going to come from property tax or increase on our residents' taxes, which I'd never want to have to entertain. So my question to you is, in a roundabout way, 4.55 acres, and then on the back where the gun range is, 19 acres. That's not enough commercial to excite me. I would love to see you all bring back a different remnant with the frontage on 211, addressed like Mr. Barklow said was kind of in the thoughts. A statement, I guess, more than a question, but if you would like to, if you would like to respond to that.
Yeah, I do think there may have been a question in there. So as it relates to the tax base, it's a completely fair question, and what I would propose is, you know, what you heard from Midway and the gentleman representing them, you know, there's a time value of money, right? So the tax base that you're going to get 20 years from now, when it's developed as a commercial retail shopping center, you know, versus now, you know, if you're generating $250,000 plus just from the residential of taxes, plus whatever other taxes, you know, that brings residents who are going to spend money in those shopping centers who are going to generate sales tax. So there is real economic impact that's happening next year versus 20 years from now. So there's a big impact of the time value of money on that. And then as to your other point, Mr. Kraft, I would love the chance to discuss and understand what would, where is there a middle ground? You know, I think Mr. Barklow, you know, my colleague mentioned, you know, we're long-term holders. When we go into a community, we are, we have a community in West, like, we're the downtown. We, the fireworks, the Fourth of July fireworks show, the Christmas tree lighting, it happens in our community, in our property, right? That's who we are. We're long-term holders, we're investing in the community. We would love the opportunity to talk with you guys, understand, you all, sorry, not just you guys, you all, and understand where, is there a middle ground here? You know, let's work together and find a path. We're not, you know, we're willing to invest in the community, we're willing to put tens of millions of dollars here. You know, we understand that there's a goal, you guys have objectives, there's things. Is there additional commercial we could push and pull those lines and understand what would work? There's also, which creates a challenge to it, there was a cell phone tower put on the frontage there. So it creates a challenge to, you know, retailers that are going to go in there, the access, all the other things. But we're willing to have those conversations to understand what we can do and work together and find out that piece. So if there's a conversation to be had, we'd be willing to have it.
Okay. I think it was a statement that responded with another statement, so we're going to leave it there, unless there's something else.
I'm all about statements. Thank you, sir.
Good. All right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a motion which is contained?
I'm going to vote on the motion to close.
All in favor? Now, is there a motion? Thank you, Lisa.
I'll make a motion to deny the proposed zoning map amendment for parcel ID number 250C1022301 based on inconsistency with the future land use map designation of commercial, commercial mixed use.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes, deny.
Okay. And councilmember Kraft?
I vote with the motion.
Okay. Mayor Partenbach?
Yes.
Councilman Chula?
Yes.
And councilman Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're on to the next public hearing. Matt, are you going to read the actual statement of the hearing? We don't need to repeat it. If you're going to read it...
Yes, sir, I'll cover that.
Why don't we take a second so we allow the applicant group to depart? Mr. Kirkland, you go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you, Matt. Mayor Parten. This is a public hearing related to supplemental regulations for the unified development ordinance. I'll be as brief as I possibly can with this, because we've been through this many times, I guess, at this point. This was related to, you know, efforts over the last couple of years to both modernize our table of permitted uses, establish applicable definitions, as well as update our supplemental regulations. The past couple of months, the town council focused on public hearings for the table of uses and definitions. We moved forward into the supplemental regulations with this public hearing. But as with those other topics, we've discussed these proposed amendments with council back in October, November, and then more recently, January of this year. So quite a bit of discussion has gone into this. And I'll just very briefly touch on what supplemental regulations are. These are typically, or these are, they're not typically, they're specific regulations to uses. So we have broad performance standards in our ordinance that applies to all development, you know, buffer standards, lighting, parking requirements, et cetera, that apply to everything. What supplemental regulations do is kind of narrow down in on the specific uses and the specific impacts on neighboring properties. And they can cover some of the same topics, but they're, once again, intended to be tailored towards the individual use. So things like lighting, low-impact stormwater design, material storage in certain higher-intensity uses, you know, does the use require an increased setback, buffer yard? What about the vehicle access? Does the vehicle access for this use make sense as well? So that's a very high-level description of this. In your agenda packet, of course, you have the spreadsheet that we've been over several times about what the planning board recommendation was for essentially supplemental regulations for uses that don't have them currently and that could use them going forward, was what they tailored their recommendations around. I do unfortunately have to bring up everyone's favorite topic, Senate Bill 382, as a part of this discussion. Senate Bill 382, as we've discussed many times, included a provision for how towns can go about downzoning properties and what procedures you have to go through to do that. One of the new additions as a part of Senate Bill 382 is an addition that a downzoning is not considered just a reduction in the permitted uses or the density of the uses, but also the creation of non-conformities in a zoning district can trigger a downzoning provision per the statute now. So to that end, the planning board had made several recommendations for supplemental regulations for uses that already exist in the town. And so heightened supplemental regulations opens up the doors for those to be created as non-conformities and thus trigger those town zoning provisions. So staff's done a review out of the planning board recommendations to identify what supplemental regulation categories would be affected by Senate Bill 382. Those should be included in your agenda packet, but I'll also run through them very briefly. They're on the screen, religious institutions, contractors' offices, fire stations, multifamily dwellings, all things that we have in the town right now. So if we, if we do create a non-conformity, we've triggered that downzoning. And then, yeah, it takes up two slides, unfortunately, car washes, restaurants, recreation facilities, things of that nature. As with previous public hearings, we don't have action scheduled for you tonight, so the intention here is to receive any public comment, answer any questions, and set a date in the future for either continued discussion in a workshop setting or action from the town council. So that's, yeah, that's our next steps. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have or take any direction that council has. I don't know whether anyone signed up for a public comment on this one. Lisa's saying no, so.
Could we, could we clarify either between you, Matt, or the manager, that this, we were going to bring this forward on Thursday at our next council meeting?
That's correct. This coming Thursday, 1 to 5.
Counsel has spent a great deal of time on this, and I think absent additional public comment, then we'll review, consolidate, and hopefully approve on Thursday. So the answer is yes, and that's the plan?
Absolutely. We'll be ready.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing, since there are no other comments?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Morris, are you prepared? Tempper bratus, for sure.
Well, we've lost some of our audience. I was looking forward to presenting our police department annual report. Now, you report to a full crowd, but we don't, we've lost a few here, so, but that's all right. We'll stick with the, stick with the show here. Good evening, Mayor Parten, council members. Tonight, I would like to present to you our 2024 Oak Island Police Department Annual Report. It's a report, what I call a snapshot, of what goes on inside and outside the police department. We are, well, first of all, I'm very proud of the work that the police department and the staff at the police department does each and every day in service to our community and to keep our residents safe and also our visitors. This document here, I have whittled it down just a little bit, so it would be a little quicker tonight for the, for this presentation. However, it will later be posted on the internet, and I would encourage each and every person to read this and digest that, digest it, and if anyone has any questions or concerns, of course, my door is always open for feedback. So just a couple of housecleaning things here. Our mission statement at the police department is to serve and protect our community by delivering professional police services. Officers will enforce the law, ensure the safety of our community, and protect the rights of all citizens by policing with fairness and integrity. This is something new this year that we have adopted, is our vision statement, and we strive to exceed the expectations of those we serve, focus on being positive, and treat everyone with the highest level of professionalism. So the leadership team at the police department, of course, is myself, the Assistant Chief, Detective Lieutenant Michael Oxford, and Lloyd Haynes, who is our patrol lieutenant. And I would be remiss not to include Sarah Edge, who works at the front desk, and also Teresa Tickle, and along with other folks that helped carry the load each and every day in support of the leadership team. In the annual report is a message from me that outlines our priorities over 2024, which our, of course, our priorities is continue to keep our community safe through traffic enforcement, traffic measures, answering our calls for service, and establishing and continuing those relationships with our community, which is vitally important to myself and vitally important to the police department and to our community. But that letter there just kind of outlines that and explains what our priorities are. And one thing that our, the last paragraph is, I'd like to thank the members of the Oak Island Police Department for doing an outstanding job throughout the year, and a special thank you to the Oak Island community for their support and allowing us to serve them each and every day. So a SWOT analysis, which is our strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats. Our strength is our residents feel safe, our traffic safety measures that you see the patrol cars, we are very visible, and we will get into our traffic safety numbers, our traffic accidents numbers later on in the presentation. The support that we've received from the community, our community-oriented policing efforts, our officer training, vehicles and equipment. And one thing that I discussed last year is a weakness of ours and, you know, somewhat of a threat, is the recruitment of new officers. I don't want to harp on that a lot tonight, but it's real, it's here, it's in every law enforcement agency across the United States. It's very difficult to recruit and retain police officers. So we are constantly in a recruiting effort each and every day, somebody at the police department. So our opportunities is further law enforcement accreditation, which we were accredited through the League of Municipalities earlier this year. We are going to further seek another accreditation through the state of North Carolina before that becomes mandatory. We would like to increase our recruitment efforts and increase the training beyond the state minimum, is some of the opportunities that we have. Our threats, of course, to our police department and also our town is the national disasters, the hurricanes and the tropical storms, the minimal police officer applicant pool, and the seasonal influx of people. So that's somewhat of some threats that we, that we discuss at the police department. That's an organizational chart of the police department, and you see how the hierarchy is broken down into our patrol shifts, into our detective division, our support services. But in the top right-hand corner, the 2024 officer turnover rate is 4%. We lost four officers last year. Those officers that we lost had less than three months on. We lost some out of BLET, which is the basic law enforcement training, but right there, seeing in 2024, right out of the gate, we were losing a few police officers. The positive of that is we've retained all our tenured police officers in 2024, and I expect to retain them in 2025. Our turnover rate is 4%. The national average is approximately 10 to 12%. So we're, even though we do have some turnover, we are less than the national average. Here's our call report activity, broken down into total calls, and of course, you can see on the far left-hand side, as the season progresses, in the top being July, and on the farther right, you can see that is December. So our off-season, our off-season months are January, February, and March, and you can see the rest of them stay somewhat, stay somewhat consistent. We have had an uptick in calls for service from 2023, because you can look down at our bar graph there and see that, but that's an illustration of the calls that we, you know, that we answer on a monthly basis. Our calls for service, our top 10 calls for service, of course, is our special business and resident checks. Those are our businesses that are here that the police actually pull into the parking lot and check. That is logged through our report, our records management system, and that's how we capture that number there. So that's important to us, to make sure that our businesses are well taken care of. And you can see our calls by phone, alarms, suspicious vehicles, written report, those are our priority calls or calls for service. And one of the most important things on this slide is our average response time for emergency calls is 2 minutes and 51 seconds for police response, which I think is an excellent average time for response. When you compare it to a county sheriff that has to travel miles and miles and miles and go through a couple towns, their response time goes into 15 minutes, 20 minutes. And when we have, when we have a response time like that, when someone is in need, that's outstanding. Our crimes against persons and property crimes, you can see, are simple assault, death investigation, communicating threats, aggravated assault, and our missing and runaways. So what I take away from this slide right here is our low crime rate in our town. That's how I, that's how I digest this and when I look at the numbers as a whole. You can see our property crimes, larceny, our fraud-related issues that we deal with is very minimal in compared to an urban police department or an urban town, which is, once again, that's a, it's a good place for us to be. Our townwide patrol with a glance, and we'll start up here, we'll start at traffic stops, and if anybody has visited Oak Island, or if you live here and you speed across the bridge, you know that there's going to be a police officer probably sitting across the bridge. Now, the people that you see pulled over, a lot of times, they're the people that are from out of town, because they don't know there's going to be a police officer sitting across the bridge, and everybody else knows. But we, our traffic stops, we had over 4,200 traffic stops last year. But we, our traffic stops, we had over 4,200 traffic stops last year, which is a significant amount of stops. That also is a crime deterrent when that element of crime sees blue lights and an active police officer and an active Police Department. That's a deterrent, and I encourage that. The violations that we issued, we had over 3,000 tickets that was issued, 1,500 warnings. Our DWI stayed very consistent with 23 and 24. You can see the warrants that were served and the self-initiated arrest. You know, we're right there at 180, 193 annually for self-initiated arrest. Our traffic summary, which is very important to me and very, very important to a lot of people that live here, because we do have a lot of traffic. So you can see here, our total traffic accidents in 2024 was 219, and just to the right of that bubble is our traffic accidents with injuries was 13, and in 2023, it was nine. And then you, in the middle section, the golf cart accidents, this year, we had 13 total golf cart accidents. And then golf cart accidents with injuries, we had five, and then with a vehicle, we had one. And I'm going to show you a diagram that illustrates that point here in just a minute about our traffic accidents and where they are around our town. The majority of them are going to come from traffic accidents in public vehicle areas and parking lots. And then, this is a great slide to have, our traffic accidents with fatalities is zero for the last two years, which is very good. So our traffic activity, our traffic stops, the LSV, our low-speed vehicles, we stopped 356 in 2024. Our DWI arrests were very consistent. We issued almost 1,000 speeding tickets in 2024. Most of them were on the bridges, you know, the majority of them. And then revoked and no license, the seatbelt violations and so forth. So we issued 2,611 citations with a total of 3,128 charges. So here's a pie chart that breaks down our traffic accidents. You can see Long Beach Road, we'll start there. We had six accidents on Long Beach Road. Middleton Avenue, there was 10. Yacht Drive, 13. Beach Drive, 16. Oak Island Drive was 29. The side streets were 50, and the parking lots were 95, and with a total accidents of 2019. Just a bar graph there to kind of show you the different locations of the traffic accidents. So here is something of importance. If, this is, of course, a map of our entire jurisdiction, and the red stars indicate all vehicle accidents 2024 that listed injuries. That's vehicles. The yellow stars indicates golf carts with accidents. So you'll see, of course, there's five of them. We had three that were on Yacht Drive, and then one in the middle there, I think it was at Holly Midway, and then we had one here on East Oak Island Drive, right here in front of Town Hall back this last summer. The three on Yacht Drive of noteworthy importance were they were single accident vehicles. That means another car did not collide with them. All three of those were traveling at an excess speed and made an abrupt turn and rolled over. So there's where our accidents on Yacht Drive. Our other two involved vehicles. The one that was on East Oak Island Drive was a fairly significant accident, which happened right here in front of us, which, by the way, was caught on our traffic safety cameras here. After we put them around Town Hall, we captured that traffic accident. Our narcotics violations around town, we've had, you can see our felony arrests, our misdemeanor charges. Here's another noteworthy statistic is maintained dwelling for drug distribution. That means that we did not arrest anybody for selling drugs out of their home in the past two years, which is outstanding. The non-fatal overdoses, we see the four and the six, and fatal drug overdoses, we've not had a true fatal overdose in two years. And then the non-resident, what that means is we have a visitor that showed up, and that statistic there comes, the non-fatal overdoses, four out of those were non-resident visitors. For our patrol car mileage, we drove over 430,000 miles last year. There is a total of 38 fleet vehicles from our patrol vehicles to the administration, to the investigations, to Beach Services Unit, to the UTVs. So that's, we've got 38 of those. Our annual patrol vehicle will drive right around 16,000 miles per year. And what that equates to is that's a patrol car every five to six years somewhere in that neighborhood. Patrol car gets about 100,000 miles on it somewhere, and it's worn out. It's time. So that's, and that's a fairly accurate number for that. Also, in our annual report, I'm just going to go through a couple of these things here that highlighted some things at the Police Department. Of course, I mentioned this before, that we reached the agency accreditation through the League of Municipalities, which I thought was a great step for the Police Department. It dealt with all of our policies and procedures, best practices for the industry, and we actually ended up with an onsite survey through the League where they interviewed police officers, and then they came and recognized us here at the Town Council member, the Town Council meeting. I think that was back this last summer. So keeping our community safe, there was just, this is just a few that are in the report, but I just wanted to bring it to attention. You know, our LSV Slow Ride Campaign that we launched last year with the video, and also a redesigned map that would show people how to navigate around the island. One of our police officers here is, on the bottom slide, is providing active shooter training to the town of Oak Island employees here, and I can't remember, Catherine, we had about 30 employees, maybe that went through the actual training a few months ago. So speaking of training, this is in-house training for the Police Department. We had a total of 3,199 total training hours, and it's broken out, and you can see our in-service training, and that's the mandatory training that you have to have to operate as a police officer. And then, of course, our traffic-related, we're always, we want to continuously have someone in training, you know, for the succession planning of the Police Department. And our leadership training, which is very important to me, is to cultivate that leadership. We've had over 800 hours, and then other police-related training, we had just a little over 1,000 hours. There's a section in here for our new hires, and it's just a way to recognize employees that come to work for our town, you know, in our annual report. So I think we had four last year. This is only two of them, but this is what it looks like in our annual report, just a little bit of biographical information about each one of them. If we have a promotion inside the Police Department, we've got a promotion section that when someone goes from a police officer to a master police officer, corporal, or sergeant, you know, we want to recognize them, and that's what this section of our report illustrates. Some achievements here, we've had officers get the Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate, which is, it was a very difficult certificate to obtain. If you don't have a college degree, it takes about 20 years to get that. And if you have a college degree, it minimizes those hours a little more. So we had two officers that reached that certification, and we had a presentation planned for one tonight, but it got postponed. But that's, you know, we've got a section there that just, and that's something, that's some things that go on inside the Police Department that I would like our community to know. Our annual department awards, of course, we got Officer of the Year, our Traffic Safety Award. The VFW honored one of our police officers. Oh, they do that each year. You can see that in the lower right-hand corner. Our community engagement, which is, that is one of our priorities at the Police Department, is our community engagement and being part of the community, and the community knowing their Police Department, and the Police Department knowing the community, and we participated in. That's a very conservative number there with 61 events, and you can see we've partnered with the Fire Department here and the Fire Safety Camp. And the school drive, you know, at the beginning of school, we provided school supplies to several elementary schools. The CHOP with the COP was for teenagers to build relationships with not only us at the Oak Island Police Department, but our partner and agencies around Southport, BSL, the Sheriff's Department, and other agencies. And then the boat race, if anybody's never been to the boat race, that's always a great time. I would encourage folks to come to the boat race, because there's always a few good laughs there. Some more community engagement, you can see our banding together effort last fall. We participated in it. Sunset on Summer, the spooktacular event with the Recreation Center. So, of course, I wanted to throw a slide in here with Beach Services Unit. I've already went, I gave that presentation, I think it was in December, about the Beach Services Unit, but that's an arm of the Police Department as well. So just, that's, there's our numbers. And then there's a section for memories where we come up with a timeline, and this is just only partial of it, but, you know, put together a timeline, and then it just shows folks just some of the events that the Police Department is participating in, you know, as they read. And I couldn't leave this out, you know, the cyclone that came through, and, you know, we've got Long Beach Road up there. That's just outside, of course, that's just outside of Oak Island, but, you know, that's a shot of, you know, us working there, and I think it was right after that picture that the Fire Department came through, and the high-water vehicle made a couple rescues. I want to make sure I point that out, but that was an impressive picture that was taken. So one thing that we have included this year is our departmental goals, and I won't go through all those, but, you know, the goals of our Police Department is always, and the foundation is to ensure our community is safe. And I want our residents to know and our visitors that we work every day, and we take that serious, and we are committed to that. Continue to engage the community and build partnerships. I think that's critically important in 2024, moving forward, is that we have relationships built, because when you do have a problem, it's easier to talk to somebody that you already know if there's a problem. And that's part of the community policing model, is let's solve problems together. If it's in the Police Department's lane, we will try to solve that problem. And then the last category there is our employee recruitment and development strategies. I just, I always, in the back of my mind, we've always got the employees that are on my mind, and making them more efficient and training them to be the very best that they can be, which provides a better service to our community. And that is the last slide, and there's a few folks that helped put this together, but I want to bring special attention to Sarah Edge, who I have to give credit, about 90% of putting this entire report together, and with all the nice graphics and the pictures and everything, she really made us look good this year, and I'm so thankful to have her on staff. And then the last thing that I'll say is I appreciate it. I appreciate the work that the Police Department does. I appreciate our community with the level of support that we get each and every day. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I will say, having been beyond this dais for eight years, your impact since your arrival has been transformational. We see it, we feel it every day, and I want to thank you for your leadership. And fancy slides, too. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Yes. Thank you. Madam Clerk gave me a promotion. She promoted me to Chairman. I'm just a lowly councilperson, so that's the only correction I would like to establish in the minutes.
Okay, and just for the record, that's for the January 21st, 2025 minutes. And also, I'm just going to note for the record that it was an autocorrect error. Thank you very much.
Lisa, when in doubt, blame it on AI. Okay, we're to public comment?
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, can we?
Saying it.
All in favor? Now, public comment?
Yes, I have two speakers. Robert Green.
Robert Green, 130 Southeast 40th Street, Oak Island. I'm here today in response to your request to name the tree at Smith's Park. I left off with Boo. I hooked you now. Boo stands for Beloved Old Oki. Name the tree, I would suggest, would be Oki. You can use the acronym BOO as a setup. That is my comment. Thank you.
Tony Morgan?
Tony Morgan, 4808 West Beach Drive. Just have a few comments. I don't believe that the majority of us citizens and property owners are pleased with the amount of money that's being spent that is not in the budget. Things like paying a company to seek out and find zoning violations after hiring four additional zoning officers, hiring another company to go and seek out more parking spots when the company we already use for parking stated that they could do it. I and others feel there is a fair amount of our tax dollars being wasted. Some of you like to use the word "community." This is not what I and others consider to be community-minded. It seems more like an HOA with making a big deal out of things that don't bother most of us. My community is about helping others, like helping the elderly pick up their yard, slowing down on a side street as the neighborhood kids shoot hoops on a goal near the road because impervious rules won't permit their parents to have a concrete pad to put a goal on. It's about looking out for busted pipes after a freeze. It's neighbors helping neighbors. Definitely not micromanaging and ratting out neighbors for minor zoning violations. One other thing that I've thought a lot about and I would like to recommend to the council is that we look into changing our charter when it comes to council members and make zones or districts to where members represent all areas of the town, for example, like southeast, northeast, southwest, northwest, island districts, and then a mainland district. I just believe it would represent the citizens and property owners equally, because all of us face different situations and different things. And then on a positive note, I would like to thank the Police Department for recognizing that at Oak Island, we don't get much snow. We don't get almost no sleddable snow, but they set up a safe zone near Swains Bridge that allowed people of all ages to have a couple of snow days and enjoy it, slow the pace, and they made it a safe environment for the citizens to enjoy, and I appreciate the Police Department doing so. Thank you.
That's all we had signed up.
The chair is going to declare a five-minute break. We'll be right back. With Councilman Martin?
I'll try to be brief. The next Cape Fear RPO meeting is Friday, the 14th, so I don't have an official update from that board, but I will report on what I would call disappointing progress on our Greenway project. If you'll recall, in January of 2022, Town Council adopted the North Carolina 211 Greenway feasibility study that encompasses, you know, the entire East Coast, and so Brunswick County were included in that. That feasibility study was done in August of 2021. We adopted it in January 2022. So year one was learning and design. Year two, starting fiscal year '23, '24, and then including in this fiscal year, we set aside some money. we set aside some money that we would hope would get started on what we call Segment One. Segment One, we define, would be connecting the Rec Center to Town Hall, so 31st Street to 46th Street. And of course, the Greenway would be a multi-use path on the north side of East Oak Island Drive. The good news is that project continues to score really well with NC DOT. The bad news is we continue, as a town, to struggle with paving contractors. It's probably no secret, we hire paving contractors, we try to incent them with as much money as we can through our budgeting to get them to hang around and complete the job, and we just continue to struggle to get bidders. You know, we usually get maybe one or two bids, we don't get a lot. And the reason for that is because we're competing against NC DOT. The NC DOT is paving like crazy all over the state, as you can imagine. And so with only so many paving contractors in the area, it's a supply and demand issue. So we continue to yet again this year fall short of being able to get started on a Greenway segment due to, you know, a lack of incentives for paving. The preference is paving because a multi-use path should be asphalt. If we have any runners in the room, you know, running on concrete is the worst thing you could do. You want to run on asphalt. It's much better for your knees and your ankles. So we're not going to give up. I think we'll yet again this year talk about, you know, greenways and setting aside money and street paving, and hopefully find a way to still encourage not only more street paving, but to find a paving contractor that can break ground and get us started on the Greenway. I'll also remind you that the feasibility study, if you're interested in looking at it, to see the design of how the Greenway connects to the rest of Brunswick County through the 211 corridor, it is available on our website. We loaded it up there back in 2022 after it was adopted. So if you just go to our website and search on either the word "study," or you can type in "NC 211 Greenway," and you'll be sure to find it. So that's all.
Councilman Chulo?
Thank you. Shout out again to Chief Morris. I mean, you set the bar pretty high. Thanks for a great presentation. You know, literally, it almost brings tears to my eyes to see the connectivity that our community has with our police force and vice versa. It's pretty amazing, and it just goes to the heart of who we are as a community. And the reason why many of us moved here in the first place, because it is a community of loving, caring citizens. Mayor's home recovering from medical procedure, so for anybody who, if you want to reach out to her, I know she would love to talk to you. Anybody wants to bring her any goodies, I'm sure she would love to be the recipient of any goodies that you have. For those who have not signed up for the alerts through our website, Mike Emery's done a great job on this, so sign up, text messages, text, email alerts, everything that's happening in town, the current surveys, all the great stuff that's happening in the community. We want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. Download the new app that our town manager was responsible for doing. And then lastly, last week, Councilman Carter and I had an opportunity to meet in with our town manager. We finished up our meeting, she said, "Let me take you across the hallway. We're having a staff meeting on customer service." So he walked across the hallway to the police conference room, and there were 30 people in there that were part of a class on increase, improving customer service. And, you know, a big shout out again to our town manager, doing a great job and really transforming this staff and community. So thank you.
Hamilton Kraft?
Tony Morgan beat me to the punch. I was going to compliment the Police Chief on how he handled the sledding down on First Street. That truly is a softer, gentler town. I love that. That's community involvement at its finest. I go around town, I tell people everywhere that we have top-of-the-line Police Chief, and we have a top-of-the-line Fire Chief, so people of Oak Island, we're lucky. The Environmental Committee on March 8th, Saturday, is going to be doing a living shoreline cleanup. They'd like to have as many volunteers as they can come to Veterans Park. They check to see when high tide is and when low tide is. They do it four times a year, but Saturday, March 8th, it will be at 8:30 in the morning. Of course, our Mardi Gras parade's coming up soon. That'll be a hoot. Go stand on Oak Island Drive and yell at all your friends and neighbors. The Parks and Rec Department has put out their concert schedule for this summer, so check that, make sure you don't miss your best favorite bands. And like everybody else sitting up here, I've been going to comprehensive land use meetings, I've been going to Recreation Center meetings, and I want to give a shout out to our Assistant Town Manager and to our Town Manager for spearheading getting our, let's go forward with a Rec Center study plan, and let's get it built. They've taken the reins of that and we're making progress. So I feel good about everything.
Chairperson?
Thank you. I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record. If you've seen my posts on Facebook, tomorrow night, 6:00 PM here in Town Hall in this room, please come and participate in the second and final input, public input session for the comprehensive land use plan update. Bring your friends, bring your neighbors, go to somebody's house you don't know and drag them out here. We need folks here. It's going to be an interactive opportunity for you to look at maps and visual aids and comment on how we've been starting to structure the goals and the objectives and the action items. So if you don't come and participate, then you can't fuss at us when it doesn't go the way you wanted it to go. The other thing I would tell you is that if you show up tomorrow night, you'll have a nice surprise because our Assistant Manager, Andy Snead, is going to show you some very preliminary ideas, thoughts about siting for the Rec Center, the Community Center. He'll have visual aids for you to look at, and there'll be some questions for you to give your input on. The Steering Committee kicked off their meeting last Friday. I'll tell you that having done this for more than 30 years, I'm extremely pleased with the consultant we have. I think they're going to give us the information that we need to make good decisions going forward for Oak Island. And then finally, the last thing I'll say is a huge shout out to the Police Chief and the Town Manager for doing the live shooter training. I have been asking for that for a long time, active shooter, so thank you very much for helping protect our employees.
So I'm going to take it up a couple of thousand feet and say, the council's taken on four projects which are really seminal. They're going to impact the community going forward for at least five to 10 years. We've hired a manager, and I think we've got the right lady in this instance, and we are all convinced of that, and the progress is obvious and discernible. We are currently working on a revised land use plan. We're working on the UDO, which although tedious is critical, and we are working on a strategic plan. So the challenge for council next on going forward is to put all these pieces together in alignment and to see that we follow through and we execute. If we do that, I'm very, very optimistic about our future. And lastly, I want to claim personal privilege for just a moment, so I know this will annoy my Giants fan here. Birds! Thank you. Okay. That hurt, I know. We love Shaquon, by the way. Okay, moving on. I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are to committee appointments. There are two candidates. Thank you, Mark.
There's always an extra or not.
And sit in the middle chair and look what he does.
I couldn't believe it was real.
The first half, anyway.
So I don't want to assume, but I'm assuming that these terms would be the June 2026 terms, that you always want to start with the longest terms. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there are five votes for Aaron De La Crook and four votes for Doug Sullins, so they will both be appointed to the committee.
Thank you, and we'll pass along our congratulations to them. We are now to administrative reports. Catherine?
Thank you. As Mike's getting that pulled up, Police Chief is still here. I'll have to recruit Sarah Edge next time because her slides were fantastic. Start where it's already been mentioned, but super important, please come to our next public open house. That is tomorrow night, right here, free, input on our charting the course for our future land use plan. Couple of slides to keep everyone updated on our capital projects that are in process. You mentioned the street paving, and ironically, they have just resumed. On other projects for months, they have just resumed. We have 25 of the 33 locations completed, approximately 75% complete, and we hope just a few more weeks of work. Additional capital projects, the rec feasibility study is in process. Again, the community engagement here tomorrow night, we'll incorporate a component of that with the land use plan. At Fish Factory Road, our wastewater treatment plant improvements are moving into the bid process. We're engaging the bike transit plan. We just got the notice to proceed from DOT, so that's good news, that's on target. And working on a water capacity study for our water treatment. The parking study, as everyone is anticipating, I know, we just confirmed with them that the mapping part has been completed and they're working on the final layouts. So we will have information on that for you before the next council meeting. Stormwater, again, shout out to our stormwater team and our Assistant Town Manager, Andy, for spearheading this and really getting some stormwater maintenance moving. They completed the Oakwood Glen section in January. They're currently on the Yacht Drive 4,000 block, and after that, they're moving to Oak Holly and continuing to work their way north to south, doing the swale, ditch, and outfall maintenance. So again, we're stepping up the stormwater maintenance, given the last significant storm we had. Several special meetings going on, the supplemental regulations, as we discussed earlier, we've had the one on January 21st and the public hearing tonight, and hope to culminate in our work session with council on Thursday of this week. Of course, February is our Citizens Academy month. Anybody still left in the audience from, yay! Great group this year's Citizens Academy. They will continue to do that until completion at the end of February. Thank you all for staying tonight. Of course, it's budget season, my favorite time of year. Our process has begun. We did kick it off a little bit early in December, but for the most part, January was our council retreat and discussion of the initial goals and objectives in the strategic plan. February, the departments are working on their budgets. We have a big kickoff meeting for departments to go over instructions and entering into the current financial system, and that is tomorrow, as a matter of fact. And then in March, we meet with all of the departments to go through it in detail. And in April, you all will go through it in detail. Our council reviews with every one of the departments throughout the month of April in their work sessions, culminating in a public hearing for May and final adoption in June. One of the most important components of a strategic plan is how it is driven with the budget. So you can't put a budget together without knowing where you're trying to go, without knowing your board and your community's goals and objectives. And that's, we're trying to pull that together in our strategic plan currently, and making sure that when the departments develop their budget requests, that they're aligning to the citizen and the council's wants and needs. So it gives us a great starting point for the budget discussions, and we'll continue to do that and make changes as needed to the strategic plan through the budget process, hopefully culminating in that being adopted alongside of our budget this year. Customer service, yep, we are pushing forward. Lot of great fun and success in our customer service initiatives. The most exciting perhaps is downstairs. If you've been downstairs recently, you will see the new customer center almost complete, hopefully in March. It's looking fantastic. We want to make sure that when citizens come to Town Hall, we provide a wide range of appropriate responses and help and assistance to get your needs met. Also, continue to connect with us, as was mentioned. We continue to recruit for the app, so you can stay in touch with the town right on your cell phone. Just go to our website and sign up for our alerts. We want to spend just a minute at the end of my report. We wanted to focus on the recent code enforcement discussion, and Matt, you're still here? Matt has graciously agreed to come up and give us a continued update and understanding of where we are in this process so that citizens too understand what our goals really are here. Our intent is to help achieve voluntary compliance. We want to be helpful in assisting to property owners to help bring them into compliance. We understand sometimes code cases are completely inadvertent. Citizens don't even realize. So our job is to help coach, educate, and assist to achieving that compliance with the town's rules and regulations. Of course, we're doing this initiative for the overall health, self-safety, and well-being of our entire community, and we'll do that in a uniform, fair, and consistent approach. So for the specifics, I've asked Matt to come up and help us walk through that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that, Catherine. And I just wanted to walk council through what our typical operating procedure is for code enforcement, and to emphasize that our first step, anytime we're made aware of a potential code enforcement violation, is to verify the information, whether it's a report or whether it's a citizen calling us. Our first step is always to actually go out to the property and determine whether or not there is a code violation on the property. And our second step is a courtesy notice. We don't send you a notice of violation or a citation right off the bat. As Catherine mentioned, our goal is voluntary compliance on things. So we want to let people know sometimes it's inadvertent, sometimes people don't know the applicable codes. So we always reach out first and ask the property owner to reach out to us if they have questions or concerns or anything like that, so that we can, as Catherine mentioned, help them through that process. The goal of any code enforcement program, and this is, you know, throughout North Carolina, is to achieve compliance. I can't emphasize that enough. So typically, our process is to, as I mentioned, take photos, send a courtesy notice if there is a violation, and set up an inspection 10 days later. So we want to give the property owner time to get in touch with us or come into compliance if it's clear what they need to do. And then another inspection 10 days later before we send off any notice of violation. So there's plenty of opportunity for folks to come into compliance. You were presented with a survey that was conducted by a third party recently, and we treat that as if we had, you know, gotten several calls for notices or for potential code enforcement violations. And to a lot of people's credit, they've reached out to our staff, you know, to say, "Hey, I want to know, can you schedule a time?" And we're happy to schedule a time with anybody who's worried about something, to meet with them on site, to discuss what might or might not be a problem, and to help them understand what they need to do to come into compliance. Since last month, I'm happy to report that our, I have to give them a shout out, our zoning technician staff that handles code and nuisance violations has been tremendous. Just in the past month, they visited 134 properties. They were able to clear- They were able to clear a large number of properties from the list, because by the time they got out there, the, whatever violation might be on the property had been already taken care of by the property owner. So that's great. We were able to identify some new code enforcement cases, and as I mentioned, we'll take that through our standard operating procedure and send those folks a courtesy notice, letting them know to reach out to us, so we can help them. A couple of notes I wanted to make as well in relation to that study. Staff had about, well, not about, we had 87 cases that we had working that were not on the study. So we had quite a few that staff was already working on, in addition to these properties that we've visited. We had 35 cases that were on the study that were also already in process, so we had a pretty good caseload even before that information came out. And we've continued to work those cases as well as, you know, work through the information in the report that we got. I did want to point out that three of the high priority cases that were identified on that study were not actually in the town limits. They were on the north side of Fish Factory Road, which, if you're not familiar with the town, a lot of that, when you go down Fish Factory Road, is in the town, and you don't know that just three or four parcels there on the north side of Fish Factory Road actually isn't in the town. So in that case, we don't have any enforcement action that we can take. I'm proud of the staff. I think they've done a great job of responding to the information we've got and continuing to knock these properties off. We did start with high and moderate priority items. So I anticipate that as we move into lower priority items, we'll be able to clear many cases very quickly, because by the time we get out there, the, whatever condition might be abated as we clear those cases off. So we've made good progress going so far, and I anticipate that progress will ramp up considerably as we are able to knock off some of the more troubling cases that were identified on the survey. That's all I had for you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, one question, if I may.
Sure.
So, you know, if you see something, say something, right? Kind of encourage people when they see something. So we've had a number of residents of Oak Island that have seen something, they reported saying it's, whether it's junk car, it's junk, whatever. They submit the complaint online. It goes to your office, the recipient gets a letter, the person who receives, gets a letter, calls your office and says, who turned me in? You are, your office is sharing that information with that person, and that is creating havoc with social media, with people reaching out, turning neighbor against neighbor, because they just innocently filed something saying, hey, please come out and take a look at it. Is there a way we can withhold that information and not share that with the recipient?
My opinion on that is that if someone has given us their name and information related to something, it's public record at that point.
Can we modify our procedures then? I'm sorry. Can we modify our procedures to put on the website? If you don't want your name affiliated with this, please do not put your name here then. And knowing then, they're not going to get any further communications.
Yeah, we can absolutely take an anonymous complaint.
I mean, just to give them the opportunity, right? If they want to redact their name, then they don't share that.
Yeah, we can certainly take anonymous complaints, yes, sir. Absolutely.
I mean, I've been the recipient on social media for some of the filings that I've made, and it's not a pleasant experience at all.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that, yes, sir.
Matt, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Based on how you're seeing the processes going with the Alliance report, do you have any guesstimation of what a timeline looks like to work through everything they gave us?
Is the whole list? Well, you know, we've completed 10% so far, or thereabouts, of the properties that were identified, which is good. And as I mentioned, we started with the higher ones, so I anticipate that a lot of the low priority ones will be already dealt with by the time we get there. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to work through the list, certainly by the end of this calendar year, if not sooner. I'm talking about months, not a year, to get this completed. So, yeah, we, like I said, I'm pretty confident in the progress we've made so far, and I anticipate it will accelerate as we go forward. But I'm happy to keep council updated, if that's what you want to do going forward. We can keep track of that. Yes, ma'am.
Matt, real quick, there were like 1,100 violations on Alliance's report, and I'm sure you get a whole lot more phone calls than I do on that report. But people contacted me and said, I've done nothing wrong, and my address is on that report, and I'm totally innocent. And my response has always been, if you're quite positive, you're totally innocent, don't worry about it, unless somebody writes you a letter and then give it some thought. But just because your name or address was on that list, and you don't think you've done anything wrong, it's not time to panic yet.
Yeah, and that's a good point. As I mentioned, we all, we'll verify everything. So they have a couple of options. They can certainly wait if they don't feel that they're in violation. If they want some certainty, as I mentioned before, we've had several people contact us and ask a zoning technician to come out and meet them on site and identify anything, and we're more than happy to do that. You can forward anyone who has questions or concerns over to my staff, and we'll be happy to arrange something with them. Yes, sir.
Good deal, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to add, because the last box says, sent to attorney. And so what happens after that is, we then send a letter. And sometimes that prompts what the two citations didn't prompt. And so we send a letter, give them about a month to respond, and then if they don't, then we're going to start moving forward with legal action. And what we've done, we talked to Matt last week, because as you know, we've been kind of trying to deal with old ones, tried to deal with newer ones, trying to deal with now this whole new batch that came through that might have priority. So we've asked Matt to instruct us, which ones do you want us to take and send the letter to and then file? And so we have six different cases that sometime within the next two weeks that we'll be moving forward with legal action on. So we ironed that out last week. So we're looking to his shop to kind of tell us which ones are priority to move forward with in terms of filing.
Is that the first six of the 27?
It's the first six we would be filing, yeah.
And great news on one of those top six. We have received confirmation of service on one of our very large ones. It's been outstanding for a significant amount of time, so.
Very good. What that means.
Matt, I don't recall council formally adopting this see something, say something policy around enforcement. Can you tell me where in our procedures that that is spelled out, that we're encouraging people to see something, say something? Because I've received several phone calls from people, probably triggered by the social media events, and they want to know, when did we adopt that policy of see something, say something? Because I don't recall adopting a formal policy in that regard.
I don't know that we have.
What, so I just want to make sure the public understands that when they hear someone say, you know, see something, say something, that's not a formal, that's not a formal policy adopted by this board, like ever, right? Not the previous board or this current board. So I understand it might be causing some disheartening relationships or issues in the community, but please know, that's not a formal process adopted by this board. All right? I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. I would urge administration to review this specific point. Several councils, actually, the majority of councils brought up some concerns about how it's functioning and whether it's really endorsed by policy action. And maybe Councilman Chulo's suggestion is operable, right? You can redact your name, but file the complaint. I do think the strategy of beginning with high in previous cases is the right one, and I also think allowing time for do notice and abatement, most of the minor ones, I think, will go away. But this is an intriguing question because of social media and because of the, you know, the hype around that. So I would urge you to think about the best way to do that. Council report?
I just, I wanted to say what I did about the code cases. The other, I guess, update I will give you all is, we're starting to work on the easements for the Core project, obtaining access easements. And so sometime over the next two to three months, I would say, we'll be reaching out to folks that we need to get those access easements for, for that dredging project, which I believe is being led by the Core in March or April with a May or June kind of timeframe of award, and we want to have those in place by then. So some of our residents will be getting those notifications in the mail and be asked to submit those access easements.
Thank you. And one last item under old business, Councilwoman Carter.
Yes, thank you. As my colleagues remember, back in June of 2023, the town council voted to recommend the planning board and staff review the supplemental regulations associated with our UDO, and they did, in fact, do just that. And in the course of their work, they either modified or created new 56 supplemental regulations, and those were attached to changes that we made to the table of uses. There are still 48 supplemental regulations remaining in our UDO that have not been looked at, and we briefly talked about this at our last Thursday meeting, but in talking to Madam Clerk, we did not take a vote or reach a consensus. And I wanted to bring forward tonight to see if we could agree to go ahead and through the planning director, send a request back to the planning board to review those remaining 48 supplemental regulations.
Do we need a motion on this, Lisa? You want to make the motion?
So I would make a motion that council sends to the planning board a request to review the remaining 48 supplemental regulations.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? I want to thank you all for coming. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we need to recess?
Yes, a motion to recess.
You want to recess this?
Yeah.
So we don't need to do anything.
Yes, you need a motion to recess too. Thursday, February 13th at 1:00 PM.
I'll make the motion to recess till Thursday, February 13th at 1:00 PM.
Seconded.
Favor? Thank you all for coming, on behalf of Mayor White. Appreciate it.